Uh, we will call the meeting to order zoning board of appeals at five oh three P M. And as Daphne mentioned, we have a forum of five members. So before we read the agenda, has everyone had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from our last zoning board of appeals?
For those, maybe it is, I don't remember seeing them.
Um, I sent them out with the agenda, so um, I don't know if you were able to to review. If if you need time to review them right now, we can kind of go over it.
Yeah, this was the the boathouse floodplain.
Yeah, I I remember the meeting, so we just skip skim through.
Sure.
Yeah, you can keep going.
Are you hearing me? This is John Mugenti.
Hi, John. Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that this is the first I've seen of the minutes.
Uh huh.
And I also didn't get the agenda until just now. The other email you sent didn't have either of those in it.
Hmm, let me see.
And then when I, the ones I could open up, I had to have a magnifying glass to read, so.
I think I, I I I read them, but I think I may have just gone to the city website. Um, where they have the agenda and the meeting minutes to to view them. So if, just for other members, that's another place that that you can find the information.
Yeah, I apologize.
Um, did you feel like they were correct? Did you see anything?
Yeah, I had to leave early. Everything seemed correct to me. The only thing I I wasn't here for was the four O motion to pass. I'm assuming that's correct.
Yeah, that's that looks.
Otherwise, it, I, I mean, I would motion to accept the meeting minutes from the January meeting.
Everything looked in order to me from that last uh, the meeting minutes.
Yeah. I would second Justin's motion.
Okay, um, uh, before we're going, John, did you want to take a minute to to, you know, review?
No, I just, I just skimmed through them. It looks fine.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to approve from Justin and a second from Dave. Uh, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from January twenty fifth, signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, so that they were approved on a voice vote of five to zero. Is there any other information, any, you know, off agenda items that anybody would like to ask Daphne? For the city? If not, we can proceed with the the agenda for this evening.
Hey, I just had a quick, a quick question, just for procedural reasons, Daphne. I I heard through a a different um, city committee that you were starting to do meeting minutes a little different. Instead of asking for a vote to approve that you asked for any concerns or a vote essentially to deny. And if nobody said anything, I don't know if that's consistent with all.
Yeah.
Middleton meetings or?
Uh, yeah, it it's basically up to how however the chair would like to run.
Okay, okay.
But yeah, basically, this this new procedure is the chair, you know, can ask for any input if there are any comments. Um, you know, you can provide your comments and then the chair can kind of say, you know, the minutes are, you know, I approve these minutes kind of thing. So um, you know, with with the corrections or with comments. Um, so that that is a different way to that we can do it. Um, it it's up to the chair.
Okay, yeah, I'm fine doing how we have been doing it. I just, I started a different meeting asking this that way, like Paul just did and was told that we didn't need to do that. So I was just curious.
Right, yeah, it it's certainly quicker.
Daphne and kind of, you know, see what that procedure is and then we can make it move forward. Good point. Thanks, Justin.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, if not, Daphne, could you please read the agenda item uh, for this evening?
Yeah, so tonight our agenda is fifty nine oh nine Clearwood Court. Um, the contractor, Michelle Nell, on behalf of the owners is requesting a variance from a standard for development in the flood fringe districts. Um, since this property is located in the flood plain near Lake Mendota. Now is constructing a new home on the now empty lot. Um, the allowed side setbacks for this property are five feet. Um, which the, which the proposed home abides by. However, um, they will be unable to maintain fifteen feet of fill around the east and west limits of the structure due to the property lines. Section twenty four point oh five three A one requires residential structures in the flood fringe to have an elevation at or above the flood protection elevation on fill. The fill shall be one foot or more above the regional flood elevation extending at least fifteen feet beyond the limits of the structure.
Thank you, Daphne. Uh, if there's any other uh, folks on the call tonight. Uh, what we'll do is you will have an opportunity to speak uh, pertaining to this variance. Uh, after we go through the presentation from the applicant. So at this point, I'd like to open the public portion of the meeting at five oh nine. Um, and Daphne had read the the uh, the application. Is there any other information that the city has that they would like to share with the board?
Um, I can just share that we did not receive any other public input from, um, you know, letters or or calls from from any neighbors.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, okay, so if someone is that would like to present on behalf of the applicant or Glenn, if you would like to present. Uh, now is your opportunity to present your variance request to the board.
Um, I don't really have anything additional Paul to add other than what Daphne already reviewed. Um, it, I do believe this variance has been in place and exercised with other properties. Um, that are built in the similar area along Lake Mendota. So that's the maybe the only additional piece that I would add.
That other parcels have had to adhere to the fifteen foot from structure to property line?
Yes, I I believe that the property immediately, I would call it left, or I guess east of fifty nine oh nine. Um, had the same um, requests for variance because of their distance to the property line as well when they built. I I think it was ten to fifteen years ago. I don't know the exact timeframe.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and I can confirm that. I believe the address is fifty nine oh one. It it is the property just um, to the left. Um, they had received a variance for something very similar to this. Um, you know, they didn't. They felt that the fifteen foot would impede on, um, you know, grading and and the water flow on on this property, actually fifty nine oh nine. And so they um, shortened it to around eight feet instead of the fifteen feet of fill.
Definitely, is that just to confirm, is that west or east of this property?
Um, it is, um, the property immediately east. I can, I can pull up a aerial photo if that helps.
Yeah.
Would be helpful, yep.
I just have a comment while we're waiting for that.
Sure.
This is John. Um, this is the same issue we addressed with the boathouse, the last meeting.
That that's correct, John. Yeah.
Right, and I I don't remember the reasoning behind the fifteen feet.
Um, I I think that's just, it is just part of our ordinance. Um, it's to create, you know, an extra buffer in case the lake does, you know, flood. Um, there is, you know, that extra fifteen feet of, you know, space to protect the homes. Um, I'm not sure if, you know, it's fifteen feet. I I believe, you know, last time when we talked about that boathouse, um, we talked about, you know, shortening or, you know, changing it in in some ways. And so, um, you know, it 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 depends property to property, of course.
Right, I understand that, but was there a rationing out for fifteen feet as opposed to fourteen feet or sixteen feet?
Um, that I'm not too sure about, other than, you know, it was written into our ordinance that way.
Okay.
So Daphne, is this fifty nine oh nine? Where is fifty nine oh one?
Yeah, so fifty nine oh nine is this one right off the cul-de-sac, and then fifty nine oh one is this larger parcel. So I believe it was when they did this addition off to, you know, this side. Um, they ended up only doing, I believe it was eight feet of fill, um, instead of the fifteen.
Do you know, sorry, sorry, Dave.
I'm assuming fifty nine oh nine, the present prop or billing that's on the property is not fifteen feet off the lot lines on either side.
No, yeah, this was probably built before um, we had our floodplain ordinance in place.
Okay.
Daphne, do you happen to know about the property just adjacent on the west side, if that?
This one?
Yeah, cause that looks tight as well. I was just curious.
Um, I'm not too sure about this one. Um, uh, we, I don't think it had to receive any variances. So it it was probably existing before our floodplain ordinance as well.
Okay, and then I guess, um, so it it sounds like from the applicant, the entire. Um, site essentially is is being raised six inches to to comply with that foot. Is that? Is that correct?
Yes, so the entire lot will be elevated up. It sits pretty low relative to either, cause it stays pretty wet with all the rain that we've had. So the entire lot will be elevated up and then the grading will take place to kind of match the lots on either side. We just can't go the fifteen feet, cause we'd be in the neighbor's property on either side.
Okay, so it it sounds like maybe this is the low point. I was just, you know, nervous about if if you raise this and slope everything, now you're putting all your water in your neighbor's yard essentially. But it sounds like they're already high and if.
We'd be mindful.
Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I I joined a little bit late. This is Michelle Aker. Uh, we'd be really mindful of keeping the water on our property too. And I did meet with the neighbors to the left, um, and discuss that with them too. And and we're happy to talk to any of the neighbors that, you know, to have concerns.
Okay, so it sounds, I mean, just kind of reading between the lines, it sounds like by raising this up, it puts it at least. More in line with the neighboring slab elevations, top of slab elevations. And um, gets it above that one foot requirement. And the the only question then is, does it, it doesn't meet the fifteen feet from lot line to lot line? And it sounds like on the east edge with the eight foot um, setback. And adding our five foot on ours, or not on ours, but on this property, um, it would be about thirteen feet in between. Looks probably even tighter to the west.
Correct, uh, to the west, um, the cul-de-sac actually goes like like a little bit like further back than their lot too. Um, so we'll, it is a little bit tighter there, so we'll have to be pretty careful. But a good portion of that lot is ahead of the the neighbor's lot. And then partly why we needed to be a little bit wider too, is just parking's a bit of an issue back here. So we're trying to keep the garage and keep more space so that more cars can be off the street and off the cul-de-sac too.
The, the idea, I think, is to protect the foundation. Is that right?
That's correct, John.
So maybe we should state that it should be elevated to whatever level they need for that fifteen foot area. But taper to the, to the property line, so you don't have a lot of runoff onto the neighbor's lot.
And we're not even doing a actual foundation here. We're doing um, on slab, um, just to be more mindful and and due to water levels here.
So are you going to have to uh, grade on the adjacent properties to get the appropriate swale? Between those?
No, we'll do the swale on our property. So uh, the. Uh, so the setback, their side yards are five point six. Um, we'd probably only be able to go like a couple of feet with raising like, um, the grade around so that it'd probably be. It's hard to, it, some of these are hard to tell till we're, you know, onsite, kind of see where things are going. Um, but probably the like two feet to two and a half feet on either side would be our swales going back.
Uh, the point I was trying to make is that the further you extend that out, the more it's going to increase the runoff onto somebody else's property. So the requirement, I think, should be at the, at the base of the foundation or slab or whatever you have.
Oh, I get you. Okay, yes.
And it, it's kind of hard to to see from this plat, but um, from the existing building, uh, as far as the footprint goes north, south. Uh, where is this building in relationship to, let's say, like the the, the house to the west?
I do not have that information.
Who? I I just out there, um, and was kind of looking at the conditions right before the meeting, cause I hadn't had a chance to yet. On the, as we're looking at this plan on the lot fourteen side. There is a fence along the lot line. It's a wood fence. It's kind of right on the common lot line with this new development. There, there's a wood fence. The structure on that lot is almost. On the lot line in the area where there's a garage. And then this plan doesn't show the existing location of the existing house. But there's a shed that's um, kind of almost right in the cul-de-sac. That thing's got to be right on the lot line. Um, and then the left, the house to the left does have a little bit of a, a retaining wall. So its land is up maybe eight, ten inches from the land. So as this property gets filled, it's going to come closer to matching up with the neighboring lot to the west. And there's a little bit more of a buffer of space on the east side. It might be that this is gonna shed to the east side neighbor. You can kind of see a big tree in the middle of the lot line on the east. That's on this property. And that will probably be gone by the time all is said and done. And the other little correction I would add is that in the application, it says, well, um, lot is vacant. I'm sure it will be soon. It's not right now. So, um, it was actually useful that it's there, cause it kind of gave a a sense of. How things are headed, so.
Yeah, I think we had might, we might have received like the demolition permit of it, so, and that might have been approved. But I wasn't sure if if it was demoed or not, so, um, yeah.
So in this, as as I walked around and looked, I don't foresee the adding fill to get the floor grade. To the higher elevation than it needs to be. I don't think that's going to create any problems anywhere, so that doesn't concern me. Um. The only things that I noticed with the actual plan, um, there's a circular stair that I don't know if that structure. It looks like it's going to touch the lot line if that's a concern to anybody. And I think the plan, um, hard to mention the foundation. I didn't look that closely at the building. Design overhangs probably extend closer to the lot line.
I'm just checking my plat plan quick, but um, we do have the, usually, uh, so Paulson does show the overhangs. And then we do calculate that into our uh, impervious area. Um, the circular stairs are, would be, looks like they are touching the lot line though.
Um, and I believe for, in our new ordinance, um, accessory structures are able to encroach a certain amount. I would have to check on on the exact, um, you know, size and and encroachment that they are allowed.
And the only thing we're really worried about is the fifteen foot. Um, there were notes on there about the side area, the floor area, um, ratio. We're, we're putting more impervious area on the site. There's no, no concerns about that. Is that true? I guess that that's not even part of this, so we don't have to talk about that.
Right, yeah, I I believe they're like right at like fifty four percent, um, and we allow fifty five percent impervious.
You're right there, so.
Yeah, correct. We did make tweaks to to get right there with the permeable patio, permeable sidewalk. And then, uh, we did tweak our driveway to be right into that.
Hey, Michelle, Dave, I I have a question. On the north side, north side of the property by the driveway and the garage. What is your intention to handle stormwater? Will that run out to the private drive to Tomahawk Court? Or we run a storm sewer out toward the lake to, to take that roof line, the water off that roof line?
Yeah, uh, so the the front court, the front northwest corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, if you guys have strong opinions on what you would like, we're open to that. I was thinking most of the gutters on the house would run to the back. And then we could always look at burying a downspout there and running it back to or running a bigger swale out. I believe when I filled out the building permit, I went out to check out where the storm sewers are. And I think there is one on Tomahawk Court in that vicinity as well. Um, but usually I I don't, I factor in not using the the street, so and running everything to where then, um, to the back of the lot or where their natural flow is.
And it's a lot of roof with that, with a large rain event, why the guys could overflow.
Yeah, yeah, so this one, the, on the plans, uh, that garage, that roof, um, extends back. About. I don't have the. Exact measurement, but if I'm looking, it goes about back to the garage, so about four. Uh. I apologize. That garage is about, uh, forty five feet deep. So we could even, um, draw it on the plans that in that back corner, um, on the elevation where that roof line kind of dies into the house. We could have the downspout back there to, and then bury it back the distance or even just run it pointing to the back of the lot, just to get it away from that corner faster.
Sure. I just, if you're going to raise the grade, I thought perhaps it could come out the driveway and flow out to Tomahawk Court if there's storm sewer in Tomahawk Court.
Yeah, yeah, that, otherwise, yeah, we could do that front corner and do that too, if that's okay.
I don't, you know, I I visited the site, but I didn't spend enough time there to really look that part over, so.
Yeah, I believe on the plans, um, it is, oops, it is showing, um, let me zoom in. I believe this is an inlet, um, right at this corner.
Yeah, you can see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see that now.
Okay, yeah, we can plan just to to use that too.
I think I try and shed as much in that direction as you can.
Okay. I'll make notes and add that to to the plan. The, um, when you're on site too, like there, it was pretty congested in that area with the trees and every, and the power lines too. So I think that would be a good call.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
Well, like John said, Paul, I think this is very similar to what we dealt with the last meeting with that boathouse issue.
Mm hmm.
And if water retention is the biggest issue, and if that's, if everybody's satisfied with what will happen with that. I don't see this being a lot different than what our decision was there, so.
Definitely, I didn't have, oh, go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
I I was just gonna say, I don't either, and just from other work, just for all on the call. Um, what I've heard about the fifteen feet around the structure is really mostly for egress. From the structure and access by emergency responders in case there is an event. They like to have kind of a plinth of dry land around the structure so that they can get in and out. That's, that's kind of the concept behind it, and they just put fifteen feet in, cause that's wide enough to park a truck. Um, but in residential setting like this, and especially in these unique, small lot circumstances. Um, I think all you're trying to do is keep the house dry, so.
I do have two questions, Daphne. One I'll ask now and the other I'll I'll keep for the uh, internal discussion. Um, and I know this isn't part of the application, but can you go back to the uh, the site plan again? This is regarding uh, front yard setback. Um, and and Michelle can maybe speak to this. I apologize for going off the variance, but I noticed it, so I want to bring it up. Um, the setback from the front yard is twenty feet. So it appears that, and I was scaling off the PDF from the corners of the house, um. You're like, you're under twenty feet.
Um, I think thi- this case is is a little bit of a different, it it's a tough, um, or it is a unique, um, lot. Because the Clearwood Court, um, you can see here, um, is actually part of their property. So, um, this is technically, I, you know, from our our zoning standpoint, the, the front lot line. And so it is, I believe, you know, about that, it's technically thirty, yeah.
Okay, so there, that is included. Okay, so that answered the question, thanks.
Daphne, how far are we off the water?
Um. We're about, um, well, to the, to the raised port of, part of the house, sixty nine feet from the high watermark.
Okay.
And then fifty nine feet to the permeable patio.
To the patio, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Are there other questions for the applicant?
So that, sorry, that patio is a permeable patio, not a, that's not the former, that's not the previous patio, so.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say pervy, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but he misspelled it out there.
No, that's okay. I was just curious, okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Oh, no worries.
Were there other questions about the applicant or for the applicant? If not, are there any other uh, folks on the call that would like to speak regarding the application? Here, none. Um, so it just.
I have one question, Paul.
Oh, go ahead.
Were, were the, none of the neighbors notified? Do they, do any of the neighbors have any idea about this?
I did notify, oh, sorry.
No, go, go ahead, Michelle, yeah.
I did send out, um, letters to everybody, but as far as I could tell from access staying, that was within three hundred feet of the property. Um, so I think I mailed out about thirty letters. Um, and I have been in contact with the neighbor to the left and the neighbors to the right. The neighbors to the right, just with the shared drive, they just asked, um, that we notify them and the two people across the street of general like construction. So that when it's a little bit more congested there, they said they would pull into the, the cul-de-sac, so we don't block them in if they need to leave during the day. So, um, anymore, like when the concrete trucks are there or anything like that, I'm going to give everybody a heads up.
Sure, and then Daphne, don't, doesn't the city give notice to?
Yeah, so, so Michelle, yeah, Michelle, um, that was on top of, you know, any city notification. I I believe we sent out two fifty to three hundred feet as well. Um, we sent out, you know, mailers and they had their yellow sign up. Um, so it, we, the city sent some out and then Michelle also went out, you know, and sent her own.
Yeah, I thought you, the city sent things out, so that's, that's good, that, that's.
And we did post, uh, like the big yellow notice sign on the property too, right on the garage. So it's fairly, like, it's pretty noticeable when you pull up.
That was that, when I pulled that night, that's the first thing I saw, so it was obvious, so.
Yeah, I did have a few people with, um, I think it must be like the boat slips or like the really thin properties over to the east commie too. But they figured it was far enough away. They didn't really have any concerns.
Sure. Very good. Thanks, Paul.
Sure, uh, Michelle, could you speak a little bit more? Yeah, I I do see there is a correspondence in here from you to Daphne regarding hardship. Can you? talk about that a little bit more?
Oh, sure. I just wanted to address, um, you know, uh, why we couldn't leave fifteen feet of side yard um in order to do the um, to do the fifteen feet required. And so to do that, it would just really create a a a very hardship for designing the house, even designing a house, kind of what uh with what we had in mind here was difficult to get a good float, get uh rooms a decent size, hallways, staircase. Um, it's already a a more narrow house, so if we were to take another twenty feet off of the house, that's a full, you know, double wide garage. So we'd be down to almost like a single car garage with for a a home going the whole way back.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
If there's no, no other questions, we can close uh the hearing and discuss as a board.
And then do you guys just uh email me and let me know the results afterwards?
We'll uh, we'll discuss as a board and we'll we'll take a vote right here within the next.
Oh, okay.
And you'll you'll get correspondence from the city.
The the last thought that I was thinking about is that spiral stair because that's just kind of an accessory. And it seems like that could be moved and be out of the side yard setback. I think that that would be a a fair thing to request because it is, I don't know if it's an egress at all from the.
It is an egress, yeah.
Yeah, so then it's really kind of part of the required structure and it really ought to be outside of that side yard setback.
Oh, sorry, you go.
Oh, no, that's okay. Like, I agree with you, Bob. Um, but I wonder if that should be flagged by, like, I think we flagged it, but I I I don't know that we can say anything about it as part of this variance request.
Correct. Um, but I think we can mention something in the in the the narrative that Daphne will write up. Uh, you know, regarding that, and if, you know, egress and access along the sides of those houses, you know, that could impede that. But again, that's not part of the the variance request that we're hearing tonight.
Well, what what this is asking for is um uh, I I guess I would call it a a side yard. Um, well, the side yard setback is set at five feet. And then the zoning with the fifteen feet is being reduced. And so the stairs encroaching into the side yard setback. It's not part of this, you're right, but um it ought to be corrected.
Wouldn't one easy way to correct that, to move it to the uh south instead of the east on that patio porch? And it fall, come down on top of that patio?
Yeah, I could talk to my clients on that too. I think uh trying to preserve just view for the lake, um and not be like directly into the the window space. Um, and that's the other side was the primary bedroom too.
Well, I don't believe that stairs are required exit though.
I doubt it is either.
It's a convenience.
It's a convenience.
Right.
But it is in the side yard.
Okay.
Are there other? Anything else that board would like to discuss?
Are we in the closed session now? Sorry.
Yeah, we're in a closed session, but we were asking.
Yeah. Sure, um, I was I think personally, it makes sense to approve this, and I think that the hardship is that the narrow fifty-foot lot line with these restrictions limits the amount of buildable space to twenty feet um in the east-west direction. And by raising the house up to six inches, it brings it more in line with the not only does it meet the, you know, the requirement for height, but it brings it more in line with the adjacent um properties.
Correct.
And I guess, I don't know if you guys want to anything else wants to be added, but I could change that into my motion to approve.
Sure.
Nobody else?
I think you're right on.
Yeah, I think I.
So is is that a motion, Justin?
Yeah, I'll make that my motion to approve this um variance um to only use the five foot six uh setbacks as shown on the plan instead of the fifteen. And the um reason behind that is the, is the narrow lot size.
Well, and I think as you had mentioned before, bringing this property up to uh, you know, grading similar on the east and the west to handle uh better managed water.
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, the hardship is the narrow lot size, but this this does bring it up to that one foot above.
Okay. Did you uh get that, Daphne?
Um, yeah, so um I have the fill requirement impedes on the billable area of the property on on the already narrow lot. Um, and then bringing the whole lot up one foot above the um base floodplain elevation um will allow I believe, what did you say, Justin, will allow the water to flow better or?
Um, just bringing it up to the the level of the adjacent lots.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, if the if the lake rises, right, it's what, raising this up isn't gonna put the lake on the other people's property because it seemed like they're already above that six inches that they need to raise, like they're there's a retaining wall on the west side. And I guess I I I might just add add to that, that um the new building um seems to have and maybe I'm wrong in saying this, but it seems like the five foot six setbacks that the new building is proposing is maybe more than than the current one. Is that fair to say? It just looks like the garage is is probably more than that. And then that shed that um that Bob mentioned on the west side. Like, it doesn't look like we're encroaching anymore to the side setbacks than than is currently built.
So so I had a correct, I had a suggestion on the, you said already narrow lot. Maybe it should be just a substandard lot.
Okay.
Oh. So is that our motion?
Can you read the motion back, Daphne?
Sure, yeah, so I have um to grant the variance to allow the five foot si- side setbacks as shown on the plan. Um, based on the rationale that the fill requirement impedes on the buildable area of the property on the on the substandard lot. And bringing the whole lot up one foot above the base floodplain elevation will bring the home up to the level of the adjacent lots and not impede on water flow.
And by the term substandard, are we just saying that it's substandard based on what a minimum lot size is today?
It's less than sixty feet.
Mm-hmm.
But at the time it was surveyed, it probably was not substandard. Not that that matters today, I guess, but.
But but I think there's a rule that allows you to reduce the side by by so many inches per foot under that substandard set.
Um, so, under the, under our new ordinance, um, this property is owned SRN medium density, um and actually the minimum lot width is fifty feet. Um, so it's actually technically not substandard, so maybe we can just go with the narrow.
Would Justin be okay with removing that term, substandard?
Sure.
I I think you could actually reduce the number of words in the motion significantly and just say that we are approving the variance as submitted with a five foot, five point six foot side yard floodplain. And in the front and back, it's still fifteen feet. And that's all we have to say.
That sounds good.
For me, just a quick question. Um, was the uh new zoning code approved?
Yes, um, it is in effect right now, yep.
Okay, when did that happen? Sorry.
Um, I believe it was approved or it was in effect like March first or something like that.
Okay, so this is our first meeting since.
Yes, yes, uh-huh.
Okay, thanks.
Are we gonna reword the uh motion then?
Yes, we just made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the uh the variance is granted on a five to zero voice vote. Uh, I have one question, Daphne, that and this just kind of pertains to the question I had for you before, is this interpretation of the code? Um, that the garage is more than fifty feet of the exposure to the street on the front yard setback. Now, does that apply because this is a court and not a street? Or does it not apply because this is a court and not a street?
Right, yeah, so um this is something that Paul um referenced in our in our new zoning code. We only allow um garages to on existing and new lots to be um fifty percent or less of the the front facade. Um, the only um exceptions to those are for alley-loaded lots and for this purpose because they're, you know, they're this private right-of-way area kind of functions as that alley kind of situation. Um, also because it's on that court, um similar to what Paul is saying, um we would consider that, you know, in an alley-loaded lot, and so in that case, um they are allowed, you know, that that garage to be like the yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Okay, well, thank you. Your 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 variance was approved. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, with that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I moved adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, John got it.
All right, John. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The meeting adjourns at five forty-six. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Take care.
I have one, one non-zoning related question for you.
Oh, sure.
For a couple of seconds.
Uh-huh.
I noticed on the bike path along twelve, like you know where uh Parmenter, the on-ramp is there? About maybe a half mile, quarter mile up. You know, there's the Yahara gravel pit up there, and there's about two to three inches of silt on the bike trail.
Hmm.
And I know that we've had a lot of rain, um but it seems like there might be an issue with some retention on the site, so I don't know who do we need to call to have that checked out.
Um, that is a good question. I believe that would be our public works department. Um, they they have been they have been doing the rounds this past, the past couple of weeks on on inspecting, you know, stormwater and stuff, especially after after our storms. Um, so they have been doing, looking at some of those, but could you say the location again? It was Parmenter.
Yeah, it's on the bike path that's going up parallel to Highway twelve. Like, you know, where um Parmenter, there's the on-ramp to go uh north.
Yeah.
And then, you know, there's that big hill and the Ahar gravel pit is.
Okay, yeah.
It's just beyond Greenbrier.
Okay.
Maybe about a half mile up, like they do have a bunch of riprap and rocks coming down.
Right.
I'm assuming it's for, you know, water runoff. But there's just an awful lot of silt on the trail, and I get it that we've had storms, but it's a couple inches.
Okay. Yeah, I I mean, I'll let I'll let our public works department know. They have been going, doing the rounds and and checking on the stormwater, so I'll let them know and and they can go out and and check on that.
Thanks, that's all I had.
No problem. All right.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care.